We thrive with Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I ask you please remain standing for a moment. I want to have a moment of silence, reflection, and prayer if it suits you for Akila Kiki Jackson, who tragically passed away today. So just take a moment and think of her and her family. Just, Akila means eagle, so I'm confident tonight she flies with the angels. Madam Chair, call the roll. I mean Madam, sorry, sorry.
Councilmember Days?
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Present.
Councilmember Fitch?
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Tracus?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Present.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have a quorum.
Very well, thank you. Good evening. As we begin this meeting tonight, I would like to share some thoughts. For the past several weeks, there has been a lot of emotion and passion displayed by constituents concerning issues of importance to them. However, after last week's meeting, several people expressed concern about their own safety and about decorum during the public forum portion of the council meeting. People feel intimidated and afraid to express their viewpoints because of the disparaging, threatening, and condescending comments from members of the audience. I'd like to address those concerns now with a bit of common sense. Public forum is an opportunity for you to be heard and exercise your First Amendment right. The First Amendment protects speech that persuades. It does not protect speech that incites and thereby infringes upon other people's rights. That is why many legislative bodies don't provide an opportunity for the public to speak during sessions. For instance, downtown, the Board of Alderman doesn't even have a public forum as part of its meeting. With this in mind, please show respect for all speakers. Disruption only undermines our ability to conduct the people's business. It makes it harder to hear from all members of our community. Thank you. With that, is our motion to approve the adjournal of the meeting of October 29th, 2019. So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The October 29th, 2019 journal is approved. Journal of the meeting of November 5th, 2019 has not yet been finalized, so we will move on to bid openings. We have no bid openings this evening, so we'll move on to communications.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have no tax compromises this evening, so we will move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, 3rd District.
Received and filed. So ordered.
Moving on to road and bridge matters, item number one, 2nd District.
Received, filed, plan specifications, and detailed estimate of cost be approved, and the Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, 4th District.
Received, filed, plan specifications, and detailed estimate of cost be approved, and the Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to other communications, item number one.
Received and filed, and that was your order.
Item number two, all districts.
Received, filed, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, 3rd District.
Received, filed, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number four, 5th District.
Received, filed, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number five, 6th District.
Received, filed, and the matter be referred to the Department of Transportation and Public Works, the Department of Planning, and the county councilor, and that will be the order.
Item number six, 6th District.
Received, filed, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number seven, 7th District.
Received, filed, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number eight.
Received, filed, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number nine.
Received and filed, and that will be the order.
Item number 10, 3rd District.
Received, filed, and the agreement be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 11, 2nd District.
Received, filed, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 12, 5th District.
Received, filed, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 13, 5th District.
Received and filed.
So ordered.
Item number 14.
Received and filed, and that will be the order.
Item number 15.
Received, filed, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 16.
Drop from the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number 17.
Received, filed, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 18, and that will be the order.
Item number 19, 7th District.
Received, filed, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number 20.
Received, filed, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 22, and that will be the order.
Item number 23.
Received, filed, hold on the order of business, and refer to the council as a committee of the whole, and that will be the order.
Item number 24, 6th District.
Received, filed, and the appointments be approved as recommended. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 25.
Received and filed, and that will be the order.
Item number 26, 1st District.
Received, filed, and the county council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. That will be the same motion through number 31.
So ordered. We have no add-ons this evening, so we move to report to the county executive. The county executive cannot be here tonight, but he did want me to convey some information to you, and he did so in the form of a letter. Good evening. I went home sick today, so I'm providing my comments in writing below. Last week, our county family lost a valuable, loved employee in our Department of Revenue. Mark Ellerback passed away on Thursday at the age of 46. Those with whom he worked closely called him a wonderful man who loved his family and was a great dad to his special needs son. Mark, a former member of the U.S. Army National Guard, loved the outdoors. He was a member of the Road Warriors Running Club and led the county's annual 5K race. Mark will be greatly missed. We also got sad news today that 12-year-old Kiki Jackson died this morning from injury she suffered on October 14th after she was struck by a St. Louis County police SUV. My deepest condolences go out to the family of Kiki. The news of her death is heartbreaking. I want to thank all of the St. Louis County employees who worked at our animal shelter over the holiday weekend as we continue to make improvements to the St. Louis County Pet Adoption Center. To ensure that dogs and cats were well cared for, our employees put in more than 650 hours of time. Most of the hours went through compensatory time or volunteer. During the volunteer weekend, we received 118 applications, surpassing the shelter's goal of 100. Most of the applicants came from those who had previously volunteered with us. An audit of the shelter highlighted that while animal service shelters are not required to have a volunteer program, such a program can be a valuable asset if well managed and well structured. The audit also recommends a tiered system for volunteers so they can be better aligned with their experience. Finally, I'd like to thank councilmembers Dunaway, Clancy, and Harder for introducing a resolution outlining the county's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. We must all do all we can to make sure that all of our employees work in an environment that allows them to prosper. Thank you. That will suffice as report to the county executive. Report to special committees. Ethics Committee will continue to hold on the order of business, and that will be the order. At this time, I move to suspend the rules and in order to move the public forum portion of the agenda, to follow item number 13, new business. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. With that in mind, then we'll move on to introduction of bills.
Bill number 315, introduced by councilmember Tracus and ordinance, amending ordinance number 27,319 by repealing and reenacting section 1 pertaining to a contract with Ruben Brown LLP for consulting services relating to financial reporting and grant compliance. Bill number 316, introduced by councilmember Tracus and ordinance, amending ordinance number 27,362 by repealing and reenacting sections 1 and 2 pertaining to a grant from the Missouri Foundation for Health. Bill number 317, introduced by councilmembers Tracus and Walton Gray and ordinance, amending chapter 606, Title 6, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended Department of Public Welfare by repealing section 606.112 pertaining to fees for intermittent sentencing program. Bill number 318, introduced by councilmember Tracus and ordinance, amending chapter 107, Title 1, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended purchasing by adding and enacting one new section pertaining to the procedure for purchasing open source software. Bill number 319, introduced by councilmember Harder and ordinance, amending Title 11, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended Public Works and Building Regulations by repealing and reenacting chapter 1115, Building Code, chapter 1116, Residential Code, and chapter 1117, Existing Building Code, and by adding and enacting chapter 1118, Swimming Pool and Spa Code. Bill number 320, introduced by councilmember Clancy and ordinance, amending chapter 716, Title 7, St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended Petty Offenses Code by repealing section 716.080 and 716.090 pertaining to vacancy. Mr. Presiding Officer, that is all of the bills.
Thank you. Perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by councilmember Harder.
Please hold. So ordered.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 284, introduced by councilmembers Clancy and Walton Gray.
Please hold.
Substitute bill number 1 for bill number 284 is held.
Bill number 307, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect bill number 307. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 307 is perfected.
Bill number 308, introduced by councilmember Dunaway.
I move to perfect bill number 308.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 308 is perfected.
Bill number 309, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect bill number 309. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill 309 is perfected.
Bill number 310, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect bill number 310. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill 310 is perfected.
Bill number 311, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect bill number 311. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 311 is perfected.
Bill number 312, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect bill number 312. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 312 is perfected.
Bill number 314, introduced by councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect bill number 314.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 314 is perfected. Mr. Chair, on that, just want to, that we will have a hearing on that at a later date on bill 314. Okay, very well. Let me take a note. So you want to have a committee of the whole? Yes. All right. We'll get it scheduled as soon as we can. Final passage.
Bill number 297, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of bill number 297. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill 297, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 297 is finally passed.
Bill number 298, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of bill number 298. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill 298, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 298 is finally passed.
Bill number 299, introduced by councilmember Harder.
I move for final passage of bill number 299. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill 299, there are six ayes and one absent.
Very well, bill number 299 is finally passed.
Bill number 300, introduced by councilmember Days.
I move for final passage of bill number 300.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill 300, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 300 is finally passed.
Bill number 301, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of bill number 301. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill 301, there are six ayes and one absent.
Very well, bill number 301 is finally passed.
Bill number 302, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of bill number 302. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill 302, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 302 is finally passed.
Bill number 303, introduced by councilmember Dunaway.
I move for final passage of bill number 303.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill 303, there are six ayes and one absent.
Very well, bill number 303 is finally passed.
Bill number 304, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of bill number 304. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill 304, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 304 is finally passed.
Bill number 305, introduced by councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for final passage of bill number 305.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill 305, there are six ayes and one absent.
Bill number 305 is finally passed.
Bill number 306, introduced by councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for final passage of bill number 306.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on bill 306, there are six ayes and one absent.
Very well, bill number 306 is finally passed.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have three resolutions this evening. Resolution number 1.
I move for adoption of resolution number 1. Second. Call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on resolution number 1, there are six ayes and one absent.
Motion carries. Resolution number 1 is adopted.
Resolution number 2, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
I move for adoption of resolution number 2. Second. Call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on resolution number 2, there are six ayes and one absent.
Motion carries. Resolution number 2 is adopted.
Resolution number 3, introduced by councilmembers Dunaway, Clancy, and Harder.
Please read resolution number 3.
A resolution, "Whereas the members of the county council envision a St. Louis county that stands as a beacon of inclusiveness, diversity, and equity, and want to inspire and prepare all county employees as leaders, scholars, stewards, and citizens for a diverse and changing world. And whereas the members of the county council hope that by fostering tolerance, dignity, and equal rights for our employees, their families, and the communities we serve, we will work together to create a better life for each other and ourselves. And whereas the members of the county council believe in directly confronting issues of diversity and inclusivity in order to combat the historical and systemic inequities in our government and in our region. Now therefore, be it resolved by the county council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows. Section 1, the St. Louis County Council will be working with the county executive, the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and the county management team to ensure that all departments are enforcing and supporting our strategic plan, which is in alignment with St. Louis County's goal for diversity, equity, and inclusion, and expect full cooperation involving together to achieve the goals outlined on the Office of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion's website."
I move for adoption of resolution number 3.
Second.
Call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on resolution number 3, there are six ayes and one absent.
Motion carries. Resolution number 3 is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, item number 1, 3rd District.
Hold on the order of business. So ordered.
Item number 2?
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number 3?
Hold on the order of business, I'm sorry, take that back. County council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 4?
Hold on the order of business, and that will be the order.
Item number 5?
The appointment be approved as recommended. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The appointment of Joseph T. Bernard to the Electrical Code Review Committee is approved.
Item number 6?
The appointment be approved as recommended. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The appointment of Mark Richardson to the Air Pollution Control Pier Board is approved.
Item number 7, 4th District. Item number seven, fourth district.
Hold on the order of business, please.
That will be the order.
Item number eight.
Move that the reappointment of John Rowe be approved is recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the reappointment of John Rowe to the St. Louis County Fund Investment Advisory Committee is approved. The appointment of Juanita H. Hinshaw to be held on the order of business and that will be the order.
Item number nine.
Hold on the order of business, same motion through item number fifteen and that will be the order.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have two prepared orders to see me.
I move for the adoption of, I believe, order number one and, I believe, two as well. Yes, and order number two.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, orders number one and two are adopted. So that now brings us to public forum. And as we begin the public forum tonight, to further public dialogue, we're going to follow some basic ground rules. First, anyone wishing to speak is required to sign up in advance of the start of the meeting between 6:15 and 6:28 PM. You must personally sign up to speak. Only those who have done so will be allowed to speak. You cannot have someone else sign for you to speak. Second, please wait until the clerk calls your name before coming to the podium. When you are called upon to speak, go directly to the podium if you are able. Stand directly behind the podium, speak into the microphone and state your full name and address to the record prior to beginning your remarks. You must address your comments to the presiding officer and you must conclude your remarks within three minutes on the time period allotted for your comments. Third, your comments should relate to St. Louis County. That is the purpose and the scope of our public forum. Fourth, per stated reasons, we must keep the aisles clear. As such, you will not be permitted to stand in the aisle to take photographs or video. Members of the media must remain in their designated areas and members of the public may take photographs and or video from their seats. Fifth, as I mentioned earlier, the First Amendment does not protect an individual who is loud, threatening, disruptive, or otherwise impugns the orderly conduct of the meeting and thereby infringes upon the rights of others. In extreme cases, anyone who is threatening, profane and or disruptive may be removed from the chamber if the behavior continues after he or she has been advised that they are out of order and removal is necessary to conduct the business of the council. These rules should be easy enough to comply with. I hope each of you will take them seriously tonight and in the future. I would ask those in attendance tonight to be an example to our community and to other communities of what enlightened, tolerant, participatory democracy looks and acts like, government formed and managed by we the people. Let us be a beacon of decorum and tolerance even when we differ. We want to thank all of you for your continued interest in presenting your opinions to the St. Louis County Council. With that said, Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker for tonight's public forum.
First speaker will be Zaki Baroudi.
Good evening. Zaki Baroudi, representing Universal African People's Organization. First and foremost, I want to just salute the animal rights and volunteers for what they've been doing. But also, just real quickly, when you were mentioning about the incitement of people, just imagine the terror, I mean, folks were afraid, as you kind of indicated, the terror that Ms. Millicent Williams must have experienced the night that she was stopped by this rogue police officer. Just imagine, again, as I had said earlier, in terms of white women, if you were accosted by this brother right here, and you can nod, brother, that what happened to Ms. Millicent, he'll probably be fired in the morning. And y'all, you know that. Or if not fired, really punished. So all we're saying is, that needs to happen to Nicholas Newberry. Secondly, I know, I hope it's with sincere hearts, that in terms of the death of the young twelve-year-old, but as an extension of that, what's going to happen with that police officer who was speeding thirty miles above the limit without any lights and sirens and took that young life away from us? I will hope that he is also fired immediately as well as charged. And I know that has to come from the city, but I just want to make sure that that is clear and on public record. As well as, I know, I understand that there's been some discussion about an overview of LGBT policies, but given the types of racial discrimination that we have had to experience down through years to county, I would suggest that there needs to be a special overview of policies that impact black people, similar to what you're doing for the pro-LGBT policies. And then, going back to Nicholas Newberry and quoting the manual that you have for conduct and discipline rules and procedures for the St. Louis County Police Department, he violated, of course, Article fourteen, unlawful or oppressive exercise of authority. Fourteen point two, knowingly or through culpable neglect conducts and any unlawful search of any person, automobile, house or other property.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Baroudi.
Okay, well, I'll stop on there, because there was a number of violations that he did. And all we're asking for justice. So again, and I know you have influence over the police commissioners, we're saying use that influence to do the right thing, and that's fire Newberry, as well as the other officer involved in the death of Akila.
Thank you, Mr. Baroudi.
Next speaker, Millicent Williams.
My name is Millicent Williams, 11704 Hudson Meadow Drive. I'm again coming before you as that sixty-three-year-old woman that was handled unkindly by a county police officer, Nicholas Newberry. To go through the traumatic experience I went through with Officer Newberry has left me having nightmares. Even worse, to know that I had presented to the council committee the treatment that I received that night, riding home after visiting my son in the hospital, refusing to pull over in a dark, ratted area by the white officer, which apparently perturbed him to go to a litid area, for him to curse me, use profanity, demand me to get out of my car, search me up and down my body, has left me to say, what needs to be done for an officer to be reprimanded? Councilwoman Dunaway, you asked me what could you do? And I said, my request was to have him fired. Were you able to make any attempts to see what reprimand was done? I've stated what he's done for me publicly. For them to say that it's a personnel issue that can't even be mentioned as to what reprimand did he receive? Did he receive any? Is that something, were you able to get that information? I know you didn't give me a call back. I don't know, do I supposed to ask you now or wait for a call back?
Please direct your comments to me, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, well, can you answer for Councilwoman Dunaway? Okay, well, that's what I did. Okay, not a problem. So I guess if I have a question for her, me not ask it.
Well, I think you should direct it to her office and see how they respond.
Oh, okay. Thanks for telling me that's the procedures, as within my three minutes. Okay, well, that's something that I definitely will consider doing. You know, at this time, I did present it to her. But can you tell me whether the reprimands or the secrecy of someone to violate the policies as such as Nicholas Newberry? Can you tell me what the proper procedures are to get that information?
Ma'am, I'm not in a position to give you advice tonight. This is so we could hear your concerns.
Oh, okay, okay. Well, my concern is to have Officer Newberry to be fired.
I understand that.
And I have brought that to the committee. I don't, okay, not to repeat it again, I don't know. You know, I'm coming every week because nothing has been done. I don't know, do you reach out, do the council reach out to me? I don't know the procedures, so do the council?
I think, as you know, we're in the process of getting a new police board approved. When that happens, let's see what they decide to do. But in any case, thank you for your comments.
Okay, and thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next speaker, Shirley Page.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to speak on exemplary behavior of the culture of law enforcement officers that have brought us here this evening. And on behalf of Ms. Williams and the need for the Oversight Civilian Board, I am a former Crisis Communications Police and Fire Dispatcher. Over the years, I've personally experienced and reported overt, blatant, supported, sustained, practiced, provable violations of professional conduct. The offenses involve unethical, corrupt, unconstitutional, and according to common law, illegal actions inclusive of having my life threatened. While working on the radio on the midnight shift, one of the white officers came into the radio room, stood up over me, put his hand on his gun and threatened to kill me after he had gone and purposely gotten himself in a pursuit with officers from another township. He said to me, if anything ever happens to me and you work in the radio, if I don't die, I'm going to blow your brains out. I didn't get a request from the other township in which the pursuit originated for any assistance. I was forced out of every law enforcement agency that I worked for, where I was the only African-American on my crew or the only African-American in the Communications Department. I called the Clayton Police Department and asked to speak to a detective. I was transferred and I asked the person that answered the phone if it was a detective unit. Their response was yes. I told that person that I wanted to make an appointment to come into the department to talk to a detective, to file a police report. He asked what type of police report. I told him tampering with evidence. He began to question me and he asked me who tampered with the evidence. I told him an attorney. He then began to ask me all the pertinent questions for the report. He asked me for the lawyer's name and the phone number. He asked me my name and birth date and he asked me where did I live? Not my address, but where, he said to me, do you live? I told him where I lived, noting he'd never asked for my address. He asked me, where do you live? He then asked me, how did I find out that the email was tampered with? I explained to him at that point that the lawyer had tampered with the paper hard copy of the electronic transmission email that I sent to the Office of Chief Disciplinary Counsel and entered it as an exhibit that was going to be filed in a court case here in Clayton. I told him that I had the physical evidence and I wanted to file a police report and have it entered into the case.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Page.
That law office is located here in Clayton. The detective hung up and within a very few minutes, I received a call back from the Clayton Police Department. He called me back and he said that he checked the lawsuit that was filed and the department would not take the report because the judge had already ruled on it and it was determined that I had to or should appeal to a higher court. The detective called the lawyer, told the lawyer that I called to file a tampering with evidence report against him, and he told me what the lawyer told him to tell me. The case had not ever been filed.
Ms. Page, your time is up. I'm sorry. I have to stop. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Cornell Jones.
Cornell Jones, 1122 Wentworth Drive. The late, great Maya Angelou stated, "When people tell you who they are and show you what they do, believe them." That's where we find ourselves in these con- controversies. We are constantly, at present, we are entering into the four hundred and first year of our encaption in this land that tried a phenomenon called democracy. It hasn't been proven yet, but as I look over it, our situation here parallels with that of the battered woman syndrome. In vision, here she stands, disheveled, swollen lips, busted eyes, hair pulled from her head and hand-gripped arms on her arms. Trying to, all the time, wonder, what have I done wrong? Well, that's where we find ourselves in our relationship. And the answer is, no, it wasn't nothing she did wrong, it was him. And when we assess it, it's nothing we did wrong, it's them. As I indicated, master's descendants, living out master's plan. And that's where we find ourselves in this. Incidentally, when she passed on that day, I was across the street in Division Five doing my civic duty of jury. And I say to all of us, especially the real block, you must not pass that. That's why our kids are up the river as it is. That's why the jailhouse and prison camp are full. We allow little citizen to come out here and pass a jury on a kid having no, when they say jury of your peers, and you look up and see all these grandmothers that are not your grandmother, then you already, you forget, you are gone. So I think that we need to do, and Mr. Page is absent tonight, send him a message, let him know we want to keep him absent. By the way, should he keep the police chief of the county, let's make that a millstone around his political neck. So long he's there and send them both out to retirement as soon as is possible. Our problem is that we do not make them pay politically when they violate us. We keep coming back time and time like it's spinning boomerang. We got to make a statement, let them know we count. And I said to our black politician, stop allowing them, we give you our vote and our safety behind you. And do not let any Tom, Dick and Harry and Page take that from you.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Because when we entrust that to you, stay on time, because tenure means something. It gives you ability and we give you our trust. You're supposed to be our spokesperson. But when you let them dilute that water and then you fall in line behind them, then you're lost. So we find ourselves in this, but from this point on, keep our eyes open. I heard a thing said the other day, every shut eye ain't sleeping and every goodbye ain't gone. Goodbye.
Thank you.
All right. Next speaker, Joe Gerstein.
I'm a resident of Olivet. I work for Special School District at a Ladoo School. As you can imagine, working with elementary children on a daily basis, I have witnessed drama. And yet, as a volunteer at the shelter, it's nothing like the drama I have seen promoted by the adults in charge there. During playground duty, students are always lying about an incident to save themselves or to get someone else in trouble, very similar to tactics used at the shelter. And sadly, that playground drama does not compare to that of the administrators in our shelter saga. Who do I blame? You. The county council people who continue to do this, to continue this do-nothing agenda, all of the drama, all of the behind covering, all of the faux photos and the marketing smokescreen is such a waste of time, of human resources and of our tax dollars. Kill this conflict, do not kill the dogs. Does any other shelter in the country have this kind of drama and conflict? I tried to research it and only St. Louis came up. In researching, however, I did come across this nugget and its relevance really resonated with me. It's from the Association of Shelter Veterinarians Guidelines for Standards of Care in Animal Shelters. Quote, "How quickly should shelters make changes? The first step for each organization should be to urgently address and correct any unacceptable practices. As changes made, careful attention should be given to the goals of maximizing quality of life." End quote. Wow. So simple and yet seemingly unattainable for St. Louis County animal care and control. You, the council, are listening to the few instead of the many and nothing is being accomplished to improve the lives of the animals in this shelter. By not taking action, you're sustaining the dysfunctional climate there. I volunteer because I love animals, dogs especially, but animals. And volunteering usually makes me feel good. To go someplace where I'm needed and can make a difference helps me feel fulfilled. But volunteering at the county animal shelter leaves me emotionally drained, sad and panicked because of the conditions provided for the animals and lack of concern from those in a position to enact change.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Gerstein.
The audit revealed so many things that needed to be addressed immediately, I might add, things that were critical to the care of the animals you're charged with protecting. These were things the volunteers already knew because they are on the front line. But instead of addressing the things that would impact the care of the animals for the better, Dr. Baskin and Spring Schmidt are putting unnecessary time, resources and money into rebooting a volunteer program that wasn't broken. Where's the accountability? Who's in charge? We are. We are, the taxpaying public. So I'm telling you.
Your time is up, Ms. Gerstein, I'm sorry.
Not asking you. Stop the abuse.
Thank you.
Stop perpetrating the act.
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Joseph Hatton.
Those are Sunshine documents that pertains to back in March and April, so. My name is Joseph Hatton. I live in St. Louis, Missouri. I would like to talk, tell you something about Spring Schmidt. Spring Schmidt has pulled the wool over all your eyes. I have presented evidence in the past that I will reiterate here. She has been deceiving the council and the general public. These documents will show that she had ignored rules and procedures. Remember that famous dog Faust is listed on here as an intake as owned, specifically as owned. And when it's owned, you cannot basically euthanize a dog without the owner's surrender. And there was no owner's surrender. It was marked, not only that, what is frightening is this is an intake document that was marked as intake, but on the bottom is checked as euthanized. These are the things that we're seeing. And let's talk about why Faust was euthanized. In all rabies cases, there was a state, there is stated in the National Association of State Public Health Veterinarians, or the NASPHV, and the Department Ag that reads, let me read it for you, regardless, regardless of rabies vaccination status, a healthy dog, whatever, requires a ten-day confinement. So it doesn't say immediately to basically euthanize a dog. This is the requirement by the NASPHV and also Department Ag. So the intake document also states that it actually has quarantine for ten days. It's even circled, basically, it was intake on February 11th and basically it's set out to February 21st. So they knew about that there has to be a quarantine. And also, here's a document that basically specifies the correspondence from Spring Schmidt that she knew, this specifically says, regardless of rabies vaccination status, there must be a ten-day hold. Let me read the, so she knew about that rule, but let me read their official statement on the news on here. She had multiple signs of neurological damage and other potential signs of rabies with no other presenting cause such as head trauma. Faust was stumbling, had difficulty lifting her head.
Thirty seconds.
But yet, so she had flat-out lied to the public, then the council. Policy did not say, well, as soon as we find the symptoms, say you can immediately put it down. It said, no. In the status, regardless of rabies cases, there has to be a ten-day quarantine. So are you going to take word for it when she said that, that she has consistently lied, basically skirt the process and say that this is not a termination? By its definition, it's a termination.
Your time is up, Mr. Hatton, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Next speaker, Azora Liggins.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Gerstein.
On last Tuesday, when I was here, I gave every one of you guys this handout. Do you remember? Or did you read it? Or did you bother to look at it? And I was concerned because it was a directive in here telling me who I could speak with regarding the county executive's office and the county council's office. Are you familiar with this email? Yes, no?
Go ahead, ma'am. Go ahead, please proceed.
Okay. My question is, I didn't receive any information from county executive's office nor his county councilwoman with any authorities to support this directive. So it's my understanding that this is probably just a rogue email and it goes to the dysfunctional weight of the county executive's office when you have people that are sending out these kind of emails to constituents and St. Louis residents telling them that they can't speak. And this is clearly a form that we can't. I would first like to acknowledge my councilwoman Rita Days and thank her and her staff for the consideration they have shown since her appointment. I would like to take a moment and give a special thanks to Councilwoman Gray for opening up her doors when she did not have to and not being afraid to speak on the elephant in this room, racism. I know for a fact, because she came to this council, there was no discussion on racism. And I know because I was here. It is my hope that this entire governing body understands that we cannot make needed changes with a dysfunctional government. Executive Page has described himself as a man who can, you cannot trust what he says, you must wait to see what he does. These are not the words of an honest man or a leader. It is my hell belief that our representatives are voted You must wait to see what he does. These are not the words of an honest man or leader. It is my hell belief that our representatives are voted in to ensure we are represented and to give us a voice. There is a selected group of representatives that are totally disrespected.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Liggins.
As demonstrated by Mr. Edward McGee, when he totally ignored and disrespected Councilwoman Gray and her office when she made an inquiry into his actions. Councilwoman Gray at the time was the chairman of the Health and Justice Committee. To shield Mr. McGee from his disrespect and wrongdoing, the St. Louis County counselor is representing him in, with the taxpayer's expense in the matter of Liggins versus McGee. I am currently waiting on authority to support.
Liggins, your time is up. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next speaker, Heather Henderson.
Hi, good evening. I'm Heather Henderson. I live in St. Anne, Missouri. And I can say that I am a volunteer for the St. Louis County Animal Care and Control Pet Adoption Center. I had my interview. I passed. I went through orientation and now I'm, I'm back as a volunteer. I actually started today, back to walking dogs. It's kind of cold, but yeah. So what I wanted to speak to you tonight is the, the volunteers and myself are appreciative of all the Department of Health employees who gave their time walking dogs and socializing cats this weekend because we were unable to. We do appreciate that. There was a professional photographer there. There was a lot of Facebook posts and a lot of press coverage that mostly featured the employees wearing some pretty jazzy jackets and sweatshirts and things that all said St. Louis County. So that, that was all that feel-good press is, is really great, but there weren't a lot of dogs featured. They all had a dog, but the feature was really mostly celebrating the employees and trying to recruit more volunteers. So my question is, where was all that press for the past year or more when it was the volunteers that we've had, very dedicatedly and tirelessly giving their time to the animals at the center? Where's all the promotion of the dogs? I mean, we had one weekend and it was really, really a lot of PR, a lot of warm and fuzzy, great, great posts. Where's it been? So what I'm here to ask and implore the council to do, let's keep it up, okay? So the Department of Health employees, they, they had their, their recognition. And again, we do appreciate it, but we're trying to get these dogs in homes, right? Let's promote the dogs. Let's get the dogs on Facebook posts. Let's have their names on Facebook posts and a little bit of information about them to really get the public excited about them. How about increasing some foot traffic into the adoption center? That's how we're going to get dogs adopted. So that's what I'm here tonight to ask you to do is please, whoever's in charge of the county Facebook pages, the pet adoption page, the Department of Health page, let's get them on board to get these dogs promoted. Seems pretty simple to me.
Thank you, Ms. Henderson.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Laura Kaplan.
Good evening, council members. My name is Dr. Laura Kaplan. I live in Olivette and I have an office in Clayton. Thank you to all of you for your community service on this council and for providing ethical stewardship and vision. I've been a volunteer at St. Louis County Animal Care and Control for two and a half years. Even with full-time work and a family life, I walk dogs three to four days a week. I have no prior history in animal welfare or advocacy, and I only became involved to be of service to my community. I am deeply concerned that some on the council may misperceive the dynamic between the volunteers and the shelter. At this moment, you may experience some volunteers as strident or agitated. Should this be so, it is only because the same volunteers have been persistently asking for attention to shelter concerns for some time. Inept and misguided leadership has led an institution, I'm sorry, has led to an institution in need of great repair. The independent audit that was commissioned confirmed exactly what the volunteer group has been saying for years. I come to you to ask two things. First, please consider the assertion that shelter management is behaving in a retaliatory manner towards the volunteers. I appreciate that the management does not like the negative exposure that volunteer attention has provided, but our county deserves a well-functioning shelter. Shelter management reports that they are trying to make improvements, but thus far nothing tangible is evident regarding animal care and stewardship. As always, light is the best disinfectant. Second, please pay careful attention to the constitutional rights of your dedicated volunteers. I have donated close to 625 hours of my personal time to the shelter over the last two years, and this pales in comparison to some of my colleagues. We volunteer because we care greatly about the institution and would like nothing more than to see a shelter.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Kaplan.
That serves our counties and animals well. Council members, please ensure that shelter policies, particularly those in the new volunteer agreement, do not provide a chilling effect on reporting. National eyes have begun to fall on our county shelter and its policies, and I know that we all share the same vision for transparency and excellent governance. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Kaplan.
Next speaker, Tom Sullivan.
Evening, Tom. Mr. Presiding Officer, I have a few things to mention. First, the way the public info was handled for the two nominees for the county police board was pretty awful. Policies of the police department have been given a lot of attention in recent years, yet at the committee meeting, which was held in the afternoon, very few citizens were able to attend. Then last week, the vote was taken on the nominees before the public forum. And tonight, all the business is being done before the public forum. I don't know why. It's hard to believe the Loop Trolley people now want by-states to take the boondoggle off their hands. What this means, the St. Louis County taxpayers would mostly be picking up the tab. The county has already given the trolley $3 million too much. When the council approved the $3 million, with council members Erby, Harder, and Wassinger opposed, it wasn't long before they went through those millions of dollars. Then they wanted $500,000 more, but Steve Stinger said no. Clayco then came up with a half million dollars, and then they went through that. Clayco also loaned the trolley $200,000, and they spent that. Someone made a $100,000 loan, and they went through that. The trolley received another $100,000 loan, and they blew through that. Just recently, the trolley, Loop Trolley Transportation Development District, that supposedly was broke, came up with a $90,000 loan, but the trolley people say that will be gone by the end of the year. The basic problem with the trolley is few people want to ride it. The amount collected from tickets is not even 10% of what was projected. There is no reason to believe the situation will ever improve. Ridership could increase 100%, which isn't likely, and it would hardly make any difference. It makes no sense to give more tax dollars to such a failed project. The idea that a third trolley car will make a difference is just another absurd argument from trolley supporters. I cannot remember an issue where people in this area are so united, they are overwhelmingly opposed to any more public funding of the trolley, especially in University City where the trolley has done irreparable harm. It should be remembered that public transit funds are meant, meant just for that, public transit. In particular, those dependent on public transit as opposed to those going to hockey games. The biggest issue is getting people to where the jobs are. This council has not adequately addressed that issue despite all the talk about equality and disparities. Thank you, Mr. Trakis.
Thank you, Tom.
Next speaker, Heather Craig.
Good evening, Ms. Craig.
Hello. Hello, council members. My name is Heather Craig. I am here on behalf of NCADA. That's the National Council on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse. Our office is located at 9355 Olive in Olivette. Due to a recent series of deaths involving kratom, we have many municipal governments that are looking at regulations to reduce the impact that this drug has on its communities. NCADA's position, however, is that regulation is an insufficient step in preventing poisonings and deaths that have been caused from this substance. Kratom is addictive. It has unknown side effects. It has been known to be lethal when used in isolation, and therefore, our position is that it's in the best public health opinion that we just outright ban the sale of kratom. The U.S., the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services recommended this course of action to the DEA back in 2018. And according to the FDA, and I quote, "In fact, the scientific literature disclosed serious concerns regarding how toxic kratom is in multiple organ systems." We've seen salmonella outbreaks in contaminated kratom, and there is no therapeutic dose or use of this drug. The public health conclusion is clear, and we ask that the council consider an outright ban on the sale of this drug. Right now, there have been about 152 deaths. We know that that's an undercount. We've seen this going on with vaping. There's just lots going on right now that we have tried to regulate. We are asking for a strong ban against this substance. St. Charles County has implemented different regulations. Jefferson County is exploring its options. And we do advocate in other counties as well. We work in several different counties. Right now, we have Alabama, Arkansas, Indiana, Tennessee, Vermont, Wisconsin, Washington, DC, that have all banned kratom. Denver, San Diego, and we have Sarasota, Florida, that also have enacted bans on kratom. So that's just what I wanted to say, is make sure that we're thinking about that when we are looking at.
Thank you, Ms. Craig.
Kratom. Yep, thanks.
Next speaker, Shannon Tyrrell.
Good evening. I'm Shannon Tyrrell, and I reside in 63124. One of the challenges that animal controls face is a stereotype of undesirable dogs or unwanted cats. How does one attract adopters if the public buys into these stereotypes? How does one build a committed and compassionate staff and volunteer group if that's the message? Yesterday, at the first orientation held for rehired volunteers, Dr. Carol Baskin, who is, who is acting as interim director at the shelter, presented on animal care and control. She not only played up those stereotypes, she appeared to want to scare everyone away, volunteers and public alike. Regarding the population of animals at County ACC, she said, "These are institutional animals. We do the best we can. They are taken care of, but they are not pampered." Institutionalized animals? What does it mean to pamper a shelter animal? Is it bed, is a bed pampering? Is freshwater pampering? Is a clean kennel pampering? Is exercise pampering? In the category of things to know, Dr. Baskin reported, euthanasia rates depend in part on the type of animal ACC gets. We are an open-admission shelter. That means we get animals that are the hardest to place. We get the animals no one else, including the not-for-profit rescues. They get to pick and choose the animals they get. We don't. Everything that people don't want, they're here. Let me repeat that. She said, "Everything that people don't want, they're here." And she also said, "The shelter is not equipped to attempt behavioral modifications on animals or provide complex or protracted medical care. So you need to come in knowing this. We don't have the staff. We don't have the financial or personal resources to attempt protracted behavior modification. We just want to make sure you all know that, what to expect." Coming off the heels of the owner-requested euthanasia scandal, should this really be the message to potential volunteers who also happen to be members of the public?
Thirty seconds.
If the acting interim director of the shelter says, what are those and the staff beneath her supposed to think? How are they influenced regarding the animals as things, as dregs of the earth? What's clear is that not only Dr. Baskin is trying to scare straight potential volunteers, she also seems to be making a case for euthanasia. She's already building the county's defense against high euthanasia numbers that we all know are coming with the current crisis of 400 animals with no full-time vet performing regular alterations.
Your time is up, Ms. Tyrrell. I'm sorry.
Speaking of numbers, where is the transparency?
Time is up. Thank you.
Next speaker, Linda Lowhouse.
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Linda Lowhouse. I live in Oakville. For the record, I'm one of the terminated volunteers at St. Louis County Animal Care and Control. Over the weekend, numerous county employees, including Spring Schmidt and even county council members, came to County AC to lend a helping hand. Days full of social media posts highlighting these individuals' contributions, but oddly enough, not any adoptable animals. A county Department of Health Facebook post exclaimed, "We would love to have you lend a helping hand." KSDK ran a report to their viewers, to let their viewers know that County AC was holding a volunteer drive looking for 100 new applicants that weekend. Councilman Mark Harder even had a Facebook post stating, "Come by and volunteer to walk and socialize the dogs." While I appreciate the sentiments expressed, and I hope they return in the future to volunteer, I kept asking myself, what about the 400-plus volunteers you expelled? The ones that have now have to jump through hoops to get back in the door to volunteer with the animals they know and love? Social media posts encouraged random members of the community to come to the shelter and walk dogs. Numerous county workers with potentially zero dog handling experience were allowed to walk dogs without interviews or an orientation. Meanwhile, over the course of three days, approximately 20 volunteers participated in their interviews with four and sometimes five paid staff members. These applicants had to wait until yesterday for their hour-and-a-half orientation, and once that was completed, they still weren't allowed to walk dogs yesterday. I applied 10 days ago. Today, at 3:30, I received an email to advise I was in the second round of interviews that take place tomorrow. Less than a 24-hour notice and only two, two-and-a-half-hour windows of time to be scheduled. The email advised that if we couldn't make it tomorrow, we might be able to make an interview on Sunday if the staff were available. At the end of this meeting, you may get a glowing update that will tell you how diligently they've worked to get the volunteers' applications processed and how interviews were held this weekend and how an orientation was held yesterday. 20 applicants have been interviewed so far, and only seven of the 20 applicants were able to make the orientation yesterday, a Monday, in the middle of the day, with only an 18-hour advance notice of the orientation. Of the seven that made it, only four signed the required documents on the spot. Congratulations, you now have four approved volunteers. As predicted, it will take months to get the trained volunteers.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Lowhouse.
The ones who are, the ones who care to return, back on board. This process seems to be intentionally time-consuming, arduous, and inflexible. I think we can all guess why. I know the volunteer coordinator, and this is an important note I want to, I really want to emphasize, I know the volunteer coordinator and the kennel staff are doing the best they can with the cards they've been dealt by management and the Department of Health. So in no way should this be viewed as a reflection on them. I have no doubt they're doing the best they can within the parameters they've been given. Don't blame them.
Your time is up.
Next speaker, Garrett Mees.
Hey, Ernie, I'm really sorry that you felt so intimidated by our first of the rights. But you had a P S A out. But you had a P S A out. To be testing kids for nicotine on-site, I'll bet you dollars to donuts that if you ask any school teacher, administrator, assistant soup, they don't know how to do that. That is not something they're qualified to do, and they certainly do not want a county council telling them that that's something that they need to be doing.
I think they don't want a county council telling anything to do, okay? Every, every major school district in this county was invited here today. Not one spoke.
Not one spoke because they have to be very concerned about their funding and about image.
Let me finish, please.
Please do.
It's profound that they chose not to come and not to stand in the lever before this, this podium.
Can you blame them, sir? Can you blame them?
Yes, sir.
I can't.
Of course, don't.
No, I cannot blame them.
I refuse at all.
And I'm not surprised that you do. Thank you very much.
I have no obligation to act here. And frankly, in my And frankly, in my opinion, school districts have chosen purposely not to enforce their own regulations or do so on a selective basis. The simple fact of the matter is that this body's going to act. I intend to introduce a substitute bill incorporating some of the suggestions that were made today, and there will be an ordinance passed.
Simple pleasures is still in operation against violation of ordinance in this county. This is the ordinance that keeps strip clubs from being built next to your houses, okay? Has nothing to do with minors, although it's very important, very important. But this is an ordinance that's keeping proximity away from certain types of businesses and You guys have failed to act to prevent this. In fact, you've gone above and beyond to grant them permission to keep in existence. You've sunshine them under a new ordinance, even though they were in violation of the old ordinance that was very clearly written, in fact, so much so that it was remained to be referenced in the new ordinance in order for the, them not to be able to be licensed in the future. It's in the notes of the meeting.
Thirty seconds, Mr. Mees.
I know some of you have actually shown some understanding that you should be listening to us out here. It takes four of you to take a stand.
Next speaker, Brendan Stage. Sorry, I can't read the last name.
Brendan Stage, I live down in South County. Here to talk about meridian waste. Hey, they didn't pick up my recycling again. I see the shock in all your faces. You guys may not have made the law or whatever that forces me to use meridian, but you guys haven't done anything to make it so I can choose who I want. So, again, for like the fifth time today, St. Louis County Council isn't doing anything. Do something. Give us back the choice of, or the ability to make the choice of who I want to pick up my trash. I mean, this is America, right? I should be able to choose who I want to do business with. The county council has removed that right. Can I have that right back? I mean, please? So, that's all I got. Give us the right back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stage.
Next speaker, Laura Horton.
Good evening, Ms. Horton.
Good evening. My name is Laura Horton. I live in Maryland Heights, Missouri. Yesterday, Councilwoman Clancy and Councilwoman Tracus posted a photo on social media of their visit to the St. Louis County Animal Care and Control, along with a plea to recruit volunteers to the facility and a link to the online application. I would like to share with you my experience as a volunteer and adopter at that facility. I adopted my dog Raven there in the summer of 2015, and I had not owned a dog before then, so my husband and I became volunteers to acclimate ourselves to interacting with dogs and testing the waters to see if we were ready to adopt. After falling in love with a few different dogs, they all seemed to disappear into the back where we could not access them anymore. We hoped they were going to rescue, but who's to say? Once we found our dog and adopted her, we admittedly dropped off as volunteers, but I constantly tagged the county shelter in social media posts of Raven and had nothing but good things to say about the county to potential adopters I came across. In May of this year, I decided to reconnect with the volunteer program and give back to the place that connected us with the absolute perfect dog for us. I met with Lisa, the volunteer coordinator, who had me reapply to the program since it had been a number of years since I had last volunteered, and I was happy to do so. I don't want to speak for all volunteers, but I would be happy to attend a new orientation every year or six months to make sure that we are all receiving the latest information and training. Other volunteers, along with Lisa, were extremely welcoming and patient with me, and I'm still not the strongest leasher of larger energetic dogs, but I show up because I know I'm making a difference, even when I only walk the smaller dogs or can only stay for 45 minutes to give one dog a bath. I hope Councilman Clancy was appealing to people like me with her social media posts yesterday, because there's lots of us out there, people who care deeply about animals and want to give back to an organization in need. However, from where I'm standing, I was shown the door on November 8th, and after over a week, I'm still waiting to be contacted about re-interviewing and attending my new orientation. I'm seeing countless social media posts about the importance of volunteerism from the shelter while at the same time waiting patiently for that magic email saying I can interview for my volunteer position again. I understand it's too late to reverse the volunteer program reboot, so it's time to move forward and equip the shelter staff to handle the sea of volunteer applications pouring in and get these hundreds of people, well, 118 people, like me, back to work taking care of animals at the county shelter for free. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next speaker, Beth Wasserstrom.
Good evening. I'll try to be quick here tonight. Beth Wasserstrom, 9500 Crockett Drive, Olivet. I thank you all for your service in our continued absence and visiting the shelter this weekend. As a taxpayer, I trust that you all are good stewards of our money. As you heard, only four volunteers have chosen to return to the shelter under the new guidelines. It is my belief that we are going to continue to have to use large amounts of county employees. It is my opinion, there has been a gross misuse of my tax dollars during the termination of 425 animal shelter volunteers. There are significant examples of the total lack of preparedness, plan, or execution. Many of these can be demonstrated to you by audiotape or supported through volunteer comments. I would like to request a resolution to audit the total cost of overtime, comp time, and time diverted from normal staff duties over the last week and throughout the next month, and that be made available to all county residents. Because people, volunteers were having as many as five staff interviewing, and if you multiply the number of people who are waiting to be interviewed, the overtime, the comp time, and then also the cost savings that is usually provided to county runs between $28,000 and $33,000 for volunteers. So I'm not fantastic with finances, but I believe that this total cost of this reboot could be close to $50,000. And I don't think, because there has not been a clear plan or execution and all that, that that was a prudent use of my tax dollars. And I please ask you to look into that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wasserstrom.
Next speaker, Rabia Rafiq.
Good evening, Ms. Rafiq.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Rabia Rafiq. I'm a resident and business owner in St. Louis County. I was a volunteer at St. Louis County Pet Adoption Center. First of all, I'd like to thank any of you who volunteered over the weekend. Before my speech, I'd like to say something to Lisa Clancy. Last week, Lisa spoke out when no one else on the panel did. I'm sure it was hard to speak to a crowd that is frustrated and annoyed with you, but you did, and I respect that. As a physician, I was required to take the Hippocratic Oath upon graduating. For those of you who don't know, among other things, the oath states that you have to act in the best interest of the patient. I didn't know that if you worked for St. Louis County Animal Adoption Center, that your ego comes before that oath. Part of being a great leader is being humble enough to admit that you've made a mistake. This reform, or whatever you call it, was a huge mistake. Yet, instead of retracting it, higher-ups at our county animal shelter are more concerned with their appearance. They're more concerned with the chance for a pathetic photo op at the shelter than the animals themselves. What a slap in the face to volunteers who are eagerly awaiting to give you our free time. This past Saturday, instead of enriching the lives of animals at the shelter, I was in an interview for a job that I've been doing for free. I was asked questions about my affiliations with different rescue groups. I'm not sure what that has to do with walking dogs, but, okay. I have yet to have an orientation for a job that I've been doing, but one thing I'll say is that I look forward to meeting Ms. Baskin. Why do I address her as Ms. instead of doctor? Because I don't feel like she's deserving of that title. I know it must be hard to listen to complaint after complaint every single week. Maybe the lives of do, the lives of dogs and cats aren't a concern for you. Maybe you have other changes that you're focusing on. Maybe you'd just like to be able to bring drinks in here where the rest of us can't. But I'm asking you to please step in and do something. This is not only embarrassing that it's happened in our town, but it has gone too far. Be humble and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rafiq.
Next speaker, David Palatnick.
David Palatnick? Go ahead and call the next speaker.
Next speaker, Gary Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Gary Johnson, and thank you for allowing me to be with you on this evening. My name is Gary Johnson. I worked as a janitor for 22 years. Right now, I live in Overland and work at Washington University in St. Louis. I've worked two jobs in the past, and now let me tell you, janitors are tired of working two or even three jobs to support our families. We, I mean, we have rent to pay, car insurance, medical costs, and basic, a 15 wage would help janitors cover all these things. We're fighting to make sure that our current generation and the next generation have more support and stronger neighborhoods where we, where we can strive. That's why housekeepers, graduate workers, and more at WashU came together for 15 wages to support our families. And we won a path to a 15 wage for more than 1,200 workers, people on campus. We need to do the same for everyone of our, everyone for our county, because that's what Ferguson Commission said. We need to make our region more equitable across racial lines, 15 for every working family. Many major employees like WashU, BJC, healthcare, and more of rising wages, raising wages to 15 an hour can make, can make it most be done to make our region more better for everyone. Janitors are coming together for the one St. Louis, a region where, no matter your background or color or skin, can earn a fair wage, at least 15 an hour, for good union jobs. We, we in October, we kicked off our fight outside the old courthouse, and today we're asking the county council to support 2,100 negotiation for a strong contract.
Your time is up, Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Lori Klingbeal.
Good evening, councilmembers. I am a fired volunteer that was granted an interview and a chance to attend orientation, my first chance to jump through some of the hoops, given it was shut short notice. I choose to not volunteer as I refuse to sign the confidentiality, confidentiality form that is required. The reason being, I cannot agree with the line, "I will not photograph or release info about non-public areas of the ACC Shelter Facility without obtaining written permission of the ACC Director." If I see neglect, if I see animals being mistreated, if I see their basic rights not being met, I will speak out for their sake. I am their voice. In orientation, I learned, or prior to, I learned I was in tier three, which allows me the ability to walk dogs, puppies, make kongs, clean the floors. Some of these privileges, some of the privileges I once had are taken away, as both tiers four and five designate. One does not move up to next, to the next tier without first completing 24, 20 hours of volunteer time, as well as getting evaluated by the questionable, questionable opinionated minds of the powers that be. Tier four allows the ability to fulfill obedience training, playgroup supervision, and adoption counselor assistance. Tier five and tiers entails all other tier privileges with the added benefit of marketing the rescue animals to rescue organizations by way of social media platforms. Fired being fired, some of these privileges I already had, but yet now I will not be able to advance quickly to tier five in order to speak out for these same animals. At orientation, I posed the question of being able to bring a dog to this obedience training class. No, I can't. So will there be a trainer on site? Will there host a class? No. I asked further about training, what it would involve, and what that meant. Baskin was very apparently unsure of such details. As I understood it, volunteers will be evaluated on their experience and then designated accordingly. I left uncertain of a number of things. I didn't even ask how future tier four playgroups will work out. I am now allowed to return, but will not be able to fulfill the strides I accomplished prior. Nothing has changed in my abilities to do these tasks, that is, the ability to walk dogs. So I should be happy county let me walk dogs. To me, it is about much more than walking dogs. It's about being able to continue the work I had been doing, advocating for our dogs, something that will be restricted until I reach tier five on a hope and a prayer. Bottom line, I can take Satan and dress him up in a suit and tie, soften his face so he appears pleasant, but inside, he still remains the same. You can clean county up for a day or two, but inside, it is still the same dysfunctional place. What's changed? When I see, when I see an animal being treated unjustly, I speak up as opposed to shutting up. That's my right to freedom of speech.
Your time is up, Ms. Klingbeal, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that concludes public forum through this evening. Any comments?
I appreciated the moment of silence this evening for Akila, the 12-year-old who, after a month, over a month in the hospital after being struck by a St. Louis County police officer, unfortunately, lost her life today. Moment of silence is nice. I think we need some answers from our police department, and I'm disappointed, I don't think Chief Belmar is here, and I don't know if there's anyone who's here to speak for him, but I would like to know why this happened and what's going to happen going forward to make sure that this tragedy never happens again.
Any miles? Motion to adjourn. For a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourned?[1788.32]